Well, good evening, everyone. Welcome to our December 6, 2018 city council meeting. In keeping with our longstanding tradition, we'll start with a moment of silent reflection, keeping the President George Herbert Walker Bush family in our best thoughts and wishes. And also Sam Ludlow, our longtime engineer, his wife Anne has been in the hospital for the last few days with some knee replacement and other some leg issues going on. I think she was supposed to come home this evening, so we'll keep the Ludlow family in our best thoughts as well. Thank you very much. Mr. Muchler, does the school system over there in Smithsburg, Maryland teach you the pledge of allegiance?
You can lead us.
Just got to know that first word.
Yeah.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have a lengthy agenda, but I think most of these matters we can get through fairly quickly. And if we can knock it out in about 45 minutes, Skinner's gonna miss the first 45.
I know.
We just all go turn out the lights and then I'll have to hear him, right?
Okay.
That's a horrible thing to say.
(laughing).
So, we had a couple of fun proclamations tonight. You know, we started a couple of months ago by recognizing our folks who perform outstanding public service for us. And we missed recognizing, we're gonna do this like once a month, we missed our November honoree, who we're gonna recognize first, then followed by our December honoree. So our first person we're gonna recognize is one of our Westland students, Mr. Zach Muchler. So, Mr. Muchler, come on up and join me up here. I never realized you were so impressive until we were typing this up. Geez, Wes. So, are you ready for this? This is, this would probably be the greatest moment in your life.
I'm peeking right now.
It's all downhill. Whereas the Council of the City of Buchanan resolved during its regular meeting of October 18, 2018, to honor from time to time residents of our Buchanan Upshire community who perform extraordinary service while embracing the kind and giving spirit of volunteerism, and whereas Buchanan has long championed community service and has recognized persons who have given selflessly for the benefit of our city's fire departments, Stockard Youth Center and Community Center, and Police Department, but has not formally recognized others who generally, generally perform many other acts of service and kindness. And whereas with the 2018 establishment of our Buchanan Volunteer Center, the city council deemed it to be very reasonable and appropriate to henceforth recognize our community's most giving volunteers, with the first honoree of the Buchanan exemplary service testimonial BEST being Amanda Hayes in October of 2018. Now therefore, I as Mayor of the City of Buchanan pursuant to the power and authority duly vested in me, do hereby proclaim as our city's second recipient of our Buchanan exemplary service testimonial, that's the BEST award, for November of 2018 to be Zachary Dutch Muchler. Mr. Muchler is a WVWC student from Smithsburg, Maryland, and has regularly and energetically participated during his four years at Westland in many service-related projects for his town and gown communities, including as a primary coordinator for our recent and inaugural Community Unity and Kindness Day on October 27, as Director of Philanthropy and Community Service for Greek Life at WVWC, as a 1G mentor, as a member of the LEAP program, that stands for Leadership Exploration Through Applied Practice, and further as President of the Theta Chi Fraternity. I further direct the establishment of our city's new BEST bench and installation of a permanent placard in Jawbone Park to forever honor and recognize Zachary Muchler, along with all honorees of our city's BEST award. I further urge all residents to join our city's most honored guest, Zachary Dutch Muchler, his friends and admirers, and me, along with all members of our city government family, during our public ceremony to be conducted at 7:00 PM on Thursday, December 6, 2018, as we bestow our city's second BEST award. We all wish Mr. Muchler all the best as he begins the final part of his undergraduate studies at Westland. May every resident be mindful of the importance of community service and giving of oneself, and be inspired to give selflessly for the benefit of others as we pay tribute to the many substantial contributions of our exceptional volunteers, including our second BEST honoree, Zachary Dutch Muchler. It's given under my hand, that's the official seal of Buchanan right there. I love that, that's pretty fancy.
Yeah.
The sixth day of December 2018. Mr. Muchler, we applaud you. (applause). And Casey Gilbert and Cal, do you want to come up and get in the shots too? Because they're the other two members.
You got it.
I actually voted against you, but I was outvoted by the other two. I'm just kidding. Come on up, Casey, come get a shot with Mr. Muchler. It'll be a great scrapbook shot for him. Kelly, come on and get in.
(inaudible).
Jerry knows how to push the button. He pushes my buttons every day. (inaudible). Just pulling jokes tonight.
All right, if you're her first. Yes, one, two, three.
And now, this is the last.
All right, over there, me please.
Okay. Now, Jerry, you want to help?
Sorry, you're going. Y'all are phone lines on there.
All right. That's yours, Detective.
Thank you.
You got it, congratulations.
Thank you. I mean, I'm trying to tell him to get even.
Study hard for that BUH.
Yes.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, our next honoree, our December volunteer honoree, is a gal that really needs no introductions. She's very well-known here at City Hall and has been for a number of years. I'd ask Robin Keough to come forth. Robin, come on up. I'm not gonna reread those first three paragraphs because exactly.
That's fine, it's not a matter of fact.
Except it says you're gonna be the third one, that Amanda Hayes and Zachary Muchler were the first two. So I'm just gonna go onto the "now therefore" and list some of her impressive vita. Now therefore, I as Mayor of the City of Buchanan pursuant to the power and authority duly vested in me, do hereby proclaim as our city's third recipient of our Buchanan exemplary service testimonial BEST award for December of 2018 to be Robin Keough. Mrs. Keough is the supreme advocate and protector of animals. Our four-legged friends have never had a better ally and supporter than Robin Keough, who has worked tirelessly, tirelessly, and largely at her own expense, as a volunteer at our animal shelter, as a canine rescuer and rehoming volunteer, as a founding member of our Buchanan Dog Park Committee, and as a valuable and vocal member of our Animal Care and Control Commission, all while advocating for improved legislation and administrative practice to require best care for pets and all animals. Additionally, Robin Keough advanced our inaugural Community Unity and Kindness Day, what was it, Mitzvah, is that what they call it down in Los Angeles?
Mitzvah holiday.
Yes. Conducted in October of 2018. I direct the establishment of our city's new BEST bench and installation of a permanent placard in Jawbone Park to forever honor and recognize Robin Keough and all honorees of our BEST award. I further urge all residents to join our city's most honored guest, Robin Keough, her friends and admirers, and me, along with all members of our city government family during our public ceremony to be conducted at 7:00 PM on Thursday, December 6, 2018, as we bestow our city's third BEST award. We all wish Mrs. Keough all the best as she continues her tireless advocacy for all animals, but especially our canine friends. May every resident be mindful of the importance of community service and giving of oneself, and be inspired to give selflessly for the benefit of others as we pay tribute to the many substantial contributions of our exceptional volunteers, including our third BEST honoree, Robin Keough. And this is also given under my hand and the official seal of the city. Robin, we appreciate you, you bring so much value to our community.
Thank you.
You don't do this alone. That's right.
Ready?
You've got some other colleagues that work with you.
A better half.
I'm sorry, I need to turn my camera. Yeah, that might be. All right, now. Me. Yes.
Did you want to get a shot of Casey and Kelly again?
Yes.
Do you want in here? Come on up, ladies. There, there are the other BEST committee folks that we vet these nominations.
I'm not really the third BEST, right? I'm just the third.
Yeah, you're the first BEST, third winner.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah.
And the provider of one.
Like the 2018 Super Bowl. Yeah.
All right, let's, one, two. Over here. Three.
Yeah, you're way back from that Muchler guy. You're way back.
Now, over here, please.
I got them all.
Yeah.
While you're taking pictures, I just want to tell you something about this young lady. Her and her husband came to my rescue when I had to put my dog down.
Oh geez. Thanks for that happy story.
Well, it was just a little while after Tommy passed away.
As we segue into the Julius holidays.
Yes. So I was a basket case, but I, I love them. And they're gonna give you support from the community. Make donations, send them to Robin.
That's a big case.
All right, yes. I just need to come over here, please.
Spay and neuter.
Spay and neuter.
All right, thanks, guys.
(applause).
For all you do. Come over here, man.
I'm just going to trap the middle of that one.
Oh, thank you, Ruby.
Hey, you already got 14 minutes.
We're getting a witch dinner, we gotta neuter this one.
We got a quorum, don't we?
Yeah, oh yeah, we got more than a quorum. Absolutely. Okay, we have, we, Samantha Woody, after she double-checked her schedule after the agenda came out, found out that one of her children was in a ballgame tonight, so she's coming to the December 20 meeting. So we'll let her tell us all about the improvements, the exciting improvements out at the bowling alley next time. We've already recognized Zach. And Robin takes us down to Department and Board reports, and because his kid is playing basketball tonight, I promised J.B. Kimble he could go first. So, Fire Chief J.B., how's it going, chief?
How is everybody?
Pretty good.
In your packet this evening, I got a couple things. We got the standards of coverage times paper that should be in there. And on down the line, there are the SAFER grant forms. If you remember last March, when I become chief, I brought up the SAFER grant, which is adequate staffing in fire department, and we wasn't prepared. That starts in March, the application process. I've already spoken with Kelly. That is a three-year program. I believe it's 75% for two years, and then it's 35% for the last year if you hire people. And we're in the perfect position right now with what we're doing with our timelines and stuff to apply for that grant. So, we have a couple months to prepare for that. I'd like for council to review that process and be aware that I'll be bringing that back to you.
You'll work with Kelly on that, too?
Yes.
Check and see the files.
You'll notice it says fiscal year 2017.
Yeah.
But that's because they haven't released some years yet.
It actually is updated, and I brought the new one today.
Oh, great.
And I have that. So it's the same process. We had a sewer leak in the firehouse. I had budgeted money to replace some of the flooring. So now, with the assistance of the volunteers, we're replacing all the carpet in the firehouse with laminate flooring from Dreamland Carpet across the street. And that, we've ripped up most of the carpet that was exposed to that leak, or we, all of it, but some of the still remains that was there that wasn't affected. We've painted the hallways, the whole, almost the whole interior of the fire station has been painted, and we're just waiting for them to install the laminate flooring.
That was the same, that was the original carpeting that had been installed.
Yes. We've been there for 102 years.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
So, we had 117 responses in the month of November, which is about, average, we're running about four or five calls a day. Something additional we're looking at, we're looking to expand our horizons and stuff. We're figuring out, you know, going through the accreditation. I use that a lot because we're learning a lot from it. There's several different types of EMS licensures out there. There's a rapid response for fire departments, which is kind of what we're looking at for this time, but as time goes on, we may look to expand on that. There's very little cost with that. The actual license is free, it's the equipment you have to have to provide that service that we may have to purchase. Between the money I have in the budget and the volunteers, I don't think that's gonna be an issue, but I just want to make you all aware of it, and I'll give you a timeline of what we're looking at for that. Joey and I have been talking, you know, as you look down at the job descriptions for the rank structure. With that rank structure, and here we go again, the accreditation, we have to have a officer development program. And in the past, we have basically rented books. They recommend or demand that you have a library for officer development. So what we're gonna do is present that for testing, and then they give you a list of books that we typically used to rent, but we feel that, we, we put the money in the budget that we should purchase those. That way they're in our library, anybody at any point in time can come in and study them, not just for a test, but if they have questions on something or were trained on something, they're there.
Yeah.
So, we're gonna look at purchasing those books in conjunction with the volunteers because they're gonna go through the, the testing procedures too, so.
Sure.
So, when you're talking about the SAFER grant, when you look at the standards of coverage times, I want you to look, if you have it in front of you, when you look down to the next to last line, it says engine one, and it has staffing at two, three, four, five, and six. The gold standard for staffing a fire engine is four. That's the gold standard. When you go to Los Angeles, Las Vegas, big cities, New York City, they have four people per engine, typically six people per ladder truck, okay? If you look at those percentages, of course, we have two paid staff at all times. That truck 100% of the time has two people on. When you go on to number three, 64% of the time, we have three. 21%, we have four, okay? So when you're looking at the staffing grant, if we got a grant to hire one additional per, per shift, that gold standard would be hit 64% of the time in the small-town Buchanan. We would have four people on an engine 64% of the time. That's huge for a community of our size. So, just, just, I mean, these are numbers we've all, you know, that we've figured out, like I said, the accreditation's improving us every day, you know, and Chief Gregory probably can attest to his organization also, it's stuff that you never knew, you knew you was kind of doing stuff, but you didn't know the facts. But now we have the facts, so.
I'm glad you mentioned that because we've had some of our folks that are, you know, that's just window dressing, that's just something to put on the wall. It's, it's not that, is it?
We are, we are down to now, you know, working with the 911 center with improving the dispatch time, you know, and figuring out, I mean, we're down to cutting seconds now, you know, and, and when you look at seconds, it's somebody's life.
Yeah.
And, you know, so, this is, I mean, the timelines that we've, we've broke that we wanted to get to, the benchmarks, I mean, we're doing awesome. They're, they're doing good. I mean, our emergency call volume's up 12%. The call-taking time has gone down like a minute, you know, our response times went down every minute, you know, getting out the building. It's just, it's a win-win for everybody, so.
Outstanding.
Yeah. The only other thing I had is, if you all had a chance to look at the job descriptions for, those are the two actual tested positions that I discussed last. We have a probationary firefighter, which if he's hired by the city is a tested position. Then they automatically, after a year of probation, go to a firefighter. Then we're gonna have a senior firefighter rank, and then it's a lieutenant and a captain. The lieutenant and captain is the biggest tested position.
First off, I would entertain a motion that we bring S-11 to the table. I have a motion by Mrs. Albon, may I have a second or a motion?
Second.
That was second by Mr. Rylands. Is there discussion on the motion? No, I'll call for that question. All those in favor of the motion to bring S-11 to the table, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. F-11 is now on the table. As the strategic matter, it's identified as approval to recommend to the Buchanan Fire Civil Service Commission, the fire department rank structured job descriptions for tested positions for both lieutenant and captain. We're not approving these positions tonight, we're sending it to the Fire Civil Service Commission for them to kick it around a little bit and to make a recommendation for adoption of something back to us. And that may occur, are they scheduled to meet already?
No, but as soon as you all.
They will schedule a meeting after we direct this, and then probably in January, we would take up their recommendation. So that's what this is about. We're not, we're not approving any positions or any new rank structure tonight, we're just referring it to the Fire Civil Service Commission. I would entertain a motion that we do that. Mr. Rigor has made the motion, and the second is by Mrs. Albon. Is there any discussion on that motion? Hearing of the need for none, I'll call for that question. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries. You can go to your ballgame. Tell the guys to be safe, and we'll see you soon, J.B.
You all, you live. Oh, Christmas dinner, 6 o'clock, firehouse Saturday night, council, mayor, anybody wants to come.
6 o'clock Saturday. There you go.
Is there a B square?
We'll try to, we'll try to pop in.
You can be around tomorrow, J.B.?
Yes.
Okay, cool.
Thank you very much. Okay, next up, well, we'll go with the rest of our chronology on the agenda. Kelly Cronin-Sams, our information coordinator and grant researcher writer. Kelly?
Okay, thank you.
What you got for us? Some goodies tonight?
Well, the most exciting is our new screen here, so I'm really excited to have that to work with, especially at council meetings, and we've already used it for consolidated as well, so it's.
And he went shopping at like 3:00 in the morning on Black Friday.
On Friday, yeah, he got a great deal. And now we have much improved technology here in council chambers, which I definitely appreciate and love. So, I'm just in the public view now of our website, so I brought that up today in case you haven't seen it. I'm sure you probably have, but I already have the links open, but this is just the front page, has a button straight to the information about the wagon rides and all of our news and announcements if you just scroll down. Of course, I have the agenda open, so if you go under About the City, you'll be able to get right to our agendas and minutes, that's all available online easily. Here's Tonight, so I open once again from the public view, so this is, you could be doing this at home right now. And then I thought just to demonstrate, hopefully, that we also have audio. This is just our, yeah, this is our wagon rides video that we put out, and this did get quite a few views on Facebook and shares, so just letting people know that our wagon rides are going on, and I'll just use that as a reminder, too. We have our second, second day of wagon rides on Saturday, and that runs 5 to 9, starting at Jawbone Park, and so that'll be going again this Saturday. And our first winner, Riders Choice winner, was the Governor's Inn, so it's looking beautiful right down the street. And so, we shared that, and that's gotten a lot of views too on both the website and Facebook, so, just on what I can see within your packet, and of course, this is the public side, so you can't open it up here right now, but our website, Google Analytics, right now, in the past few weeks, the ones that got the most view, we had that little big spike, that was, that day we had both posted a job for the parking enforcement and clerical, so that got a lot of views, as well as the 800 sweet, 800 pounds of sweet potatoes donated to the parish house, and that got a lot of views. So that's that spike in the middle in the packet. But, once again, you know, thousands of viewers, both on Facebook and the website every day, and able to get information about what's going on in the city, and with city council and the city departments that way, so it's been useful. The Christmas parade event has also seen a lot of traffic, I guess that's tomorrow evening, and also got a lot of views on our menorah lighting at Jawbone as well on Monday we did. Checked in, we should have the wagon rides, the veterans guitar classes, and the BUHS Lady Box Basketball Tourney up on the LED sign, but when I looked today, I had some questions if they were there, so I've emailed Cheryl to make sure they get up there if they're not running right now, and I'll double-check that again tomorrow. On grants, the Volunteer Center for Casey's here today, and we're working alongside Stocker and our Diversity Coalition to plan an event for Martin Luther King Junior Day coming up in January. And also, the BBC is going to be doing in February, along with Valentine's Day, speed dating-style event to connect volunteers with different service organizations in town. So that should be a lot of fun. Also in grants, I've got a folder here for the re-recycling truck we received, we've gotta do some training for that, so I'll be taking the training, we've gotta do that by December 28th, so I'll do that and pass it along to Jerry and Jeff as well. Looking at, J.B. already mentioned the SAFER grant for 2019, and just in general, I think I'm going to be sending out a form survey to our supervisors just to see what they're looking at for the next year, and what could I be researching for, and that sort of thing. And then at the end of your packet, I just shared some of the graphics that we've been sharing online, so I can take a peek at those. One was the winter wagon rides, of course. So besides the events, that's pretty much it for me, unless you have questions.
Questions, Kelly? She's been a busy gal, I can tell you that.
So have you, Mayor. I like a lot of your posts.
I haven't even had time to shave, Mary.
I know.
The joke's around. Thanks, Kelly. You caught the great workforce. It's been a whole year of you now. Geez, Wes, think about that.
Yeah.
I didn't think you'd put up with this, this long trip you took. Okay, next up is our Public Works Director, Jerry Arnold. How's it going, Jerry?
Very good, how are you all? Wonderful. I'm not quite that good speaking. I'm not quite the wonderful yet.
You choked that one out.
Been working on revising the city's employee performance evaluation system. Matt Gregory has provided me the Kalia evaluation process, and I like the outline of the process, so I'm borrowing from it to develop what I feel will be a more comprehensive performance evaluation system. Again, I'm about 75% complete, but I had to go through and tweak some things that were geared specifically to the Police Department, but about 75%. Hopefully next week, we'll be able to share that with the supervisors, and I'll get a copy out to all council for you to review, and then hopefully we can use that for our evaluation this year in January. Water Department, the contractor on Brushy Fork, water system improvement projects completed the pressure testing, and the lines have been, samples taken, the line crew's been working on the early warning monitoring system building, they've been building that in the shop at the water plant, they'll move that out to site and unload it as a complete unit. They'll be working on a service installation for Todd Foster out of Brushy Fork Mark, weather permitting. Sewer Department, Crew 1 continues to work on the Wood Street Project 2. Crew 2 is performing line maintenance, and the maintenance crew's performing service on equipment installed, handrails on the shop loft last week, and Donnie Tenny's attending training this week to obtain his lab certification. I'll mention that the handrails that they've installed was actually part, if you remember, had Todd Bradley from Brick Street in here, and he did a number of facilities assessment. It's one of the things that he pointed out, it wasn't a, he didn't, he didn't write us on it or anything, he just suggested that we may want to consider handrail, and that it was used very, for very limited storage, but he made the suggestion, and the Sewer Department guys picked right up on it, and they went ahead and put a handrail on that, so, you know, they took it in under advisement and fixed the issue, so very good. Waste collection new road tractor's been delivered. Also discussed a waste ward this evening about the delivery of the toders, we're about 50% on the toders. But encourage people that don't have the toders to, at the very least, if they're in town during business hours here at City Hall, to stop in, sign the paperwork to receive your toter, and then we can get it delivered to you. We run into problems with trying to deliver them because we do have to have them signed for, and it's difficult to catch folks at home frequently, so encourage anyone that has opportunity to just stop in and go ahead and sign for the toter, and we'll get it right to you. The Street Department, the Trader's Alley project, the subbase has been graded, we'll try to install the base course of asphalt this month. My understanding, if the weather continues as is, that there's a plant that's planning on staying open until Christmas. However, it is a salt well, so it'll be difficult to get material here, we'll have to pick our days, best temperature days to get it here, but if we can get the base down, I'd really like to get that base down, it kind of seals it off and lets us, makes it a little easier for plowing stuff, and then next spring, we'll be able to go in and do the, the wear course on everything, and make everything a little completed at that point. Engineering, the Gateway West Engineering and Surveying, the project designed for Phase 2 is approximately 95% complete. All design and drawing related work's been completed, preparing necessary documents, letters, and estimates for signature by the mayor before submitting to West Virginia DUH. Anticipated beginning of construction activities early spring of 2019. That's all I have, Mayor, unless there's questions.
I want to go back to one of the first things you talked about tonight, which was this, the tweaks that are going to occur with our evaluations. I think it's important to understand how that came about. As a result of our Police Department starting the Kalia process, they become aware of state-of-the-art, most professional evaluation methods, they start to factor it into their own. They start to factor it into their own mix. They then, Matt Gregory then shares that information with you. You look at it, so we've got competency, we've got communication, we've got collaboration, and now, across the board as an organization, we're going to do something better than what we had been doing the previous two years when we started the evaluation process. Is that, is that a fair statement?
Absolutely. And again, the form didn't change. Our evaluation form, our City of Buckano evaluation form, is the same form we've been using, but the process that we use to evaluate has changed a little bit, and, like I said, once you, once it's completed, I get it to you, you'll have a chance to review it. You'll see what I'm talking about, but one of the, one of the biggest things, and Andby pointed that out as well, one of the biggest things that I've seen with the Kalia version is, it's very detailed in the instruction to the riders. It goes through a very detailed process of what you're evaluating on, what you're looking for, the do's and don'ts of doing a proper performance evaluation. So it's very detailed on how to do the evaluation, not just providing forms and, you know, it goes into very great detail. It's about a 12-page document whenever it's completed. So like I said, it's, it's very informative.
Questions for Jerry?
Jerry, somebody moved, and they've got the toter. Do they take it with them, or do they leave it and return it and get resigned for another?
They, they leave it, and then they re-sign at the other location.
The toter is not theirs.
Right, I understand that, but I'm just saying, I didn't know if they took it...
Yeah, because when, because what happens is, whenever they come in and cancel their service, then that, that toter, that spawns the process of notification to the waste collection garage, the guys go out, they collect that toter, and then they sign for the new one. If they're, they're still on our collection system, then whenever they cancel, they'll sign at the new location, and then they'll be issued another toter.
Okay. Good, thank you.
Any other questions? You got another gig, too, so you're gonna fly.
Yes, sir.
So you, you are released.
Just, you go on.
Thanks, Jerry.
Thanks, Jerry. Tell all the guys thanks for watching.
Thank you.
Next up is our Finance Administration Director, Andby Jenkins. Andby? Haven't seen you forever, Andby.
It's been a long time.
About 10 times today.
Okay, so I'll give you the balances for general funds checking for the month of November, end of November. $728,179. The CD is $83,704. The Stalker Youth Center Capital Campaign is up to $234,788. We have $38,000 to $238,000 to $263,000 in coal tax. The municipal stabilization fund remains at $511,000. Other things I want to report to you is, I want to give you an update on the Good Neighbor Grant. Council couldn't recall that Callie applied for this grant to assist qualified persons to help clean up their properties. The city has to match that with in-kind labor and equipment or volunteer hours. And during the last volunteer day, we had several college students, Mr. Merchant's here, I was going to thank him, were supervised by our housing enforcement officer and helped clean up two of those residents. The housing, and the reason I'm talking about this, because the housing enforcement officer was recently contacted by the Health Department and asked the city if they could assist one of our city residents in cleaning up their property. It had become a health and safety issue, and the person was, didn't have the resources to do this. So our housing enforcement officer worked with the Health Department and is working with the Opportunity House to get volunteers to go in there and help this person to clean up the property. And then what happens is, we can use that as our match, and then we can use these grant funds for the dumping fees, for the debris that's picked up. And as an example, during the volunteer days, those two properties we cleaned up cost $341. So this is a, this is a good thing, and I'd like for council, when we get into the budget sessions, to perhaps think about, if we don't get the grant, and we may not get the grant, is to at least set money aside for residents that qualify for it, they're low-income, social security disabled, to help them clean up the properties. During the, next thing is, during the last sanitary board meeting, I wanted to update you on that. The sanitary board billed the general fund for stormwater work that they'd done last year. The last bill that the sanitary board sent the general fund was $72,000, but we only budgeted $50,000 in the budget for that. General Fund owes the sanitary board $20,000 on the Brook Street project, so the sanitary board is willing to let that go, the $20,000 in lieu of a part of this payment, so that'll cover the cost of that stormwater project. But I'm also telling you that, too, because probably towards the end of the year, we may have to come up with some more stormwater money in the general fund budget. That's one of those things we talked about with the sales tax, that this is not a cheap project, and we, sanitary cannot use sewer funds to work on these projects, so general fund has to reimburse them for these, so. Next thing, the final step of the sanitary sewer increase will take effect in December. The billings won't go out until around February, but this is that second step of that ordinance that was adopted last year, October of 2017. There was a two-step process, and that, that takes effect in December, but the billings won't go out until February, so I wanted to update you on that, so you wouldn't be wondering what was going on with your sewer bills. It puts the san, the sanitary board in a much better financial situation for the needed equipment and upgrades, and an example of that is, we just opened bids for a UV unit. And without going into a lot of details, this UV unit that they have now is completely outdated, and they can't even find the parts for it, so we have to modify and upgrade this one. For just a portion of that UV unit is $90,000, and that's, we'll have to bid out the other portion of that next year. And they also recently purchased a truck. And then we can also set aside money for, in finances, to assist them for emergencies later and to meet their bond requirements, so this rate increase has helped them greatly financially. Our auditor is sending out the preliminary work, and most of you filled that out, and sent back your letters of, that was required by the auditor. So he claims that he's going to start his audit earlier this year than he did last year, so we'll probably be into our audit, I'm going to guess probably by March, June, April. Let's see. The only other thing, I'm reviewing the parking enforcement clerical applications right now. We got, we need to schedule some interviews for that, and we are getting the finalized loan documents for this garbage truck that Jerry just talked about, and getting those back to the bank. The only other thing is, in your bills to be approved, the ones I like to point out to you, they're little ones, that are not usual payment of bills. We sent $15,000 to the Upsher County Development Authority, that was for the budget. You contribute, you've authorized to pay them $30,000, and we've given them half of that, $15,000. We'll give them the other half probably in May to, to clear out that budget item. And we've also given the airport authority their first half payment of $7,500, and the Health Department their allocation of $5,000. And I think that's it.
Andby, I want to revisit with you the reserve requirements imposed by the state of West Virginia relative to public utilities. We are required, as I understand it, by statute and administrative rule, to maintain a 1/8 reserve, which means 12.5% of whatever our anticipated revenue is, based upon the previous year's revenue. So if you had a $3 million a year utility enterprise, that means that we have to have three times 125,000, right? Or what would be the equivalent of 337,500 in a reserve account by state law.
Yeah.
And that's in case we have an emergency. We've got a pool of money to turn to that we are permitted to, it's still our money, it's not going anyplace, but the state wants us to have that reserve.
Yeah.
Historically, our, our sanitary board has had almost no reserve. So part of what we are accomplishing with this two-phase sewer increase was to finally be able to not be written up anymore by auditors, that we are in compliance with that state mandate.
Yes. Yeah. It's good to have that, have emergency, you need it.
Absolutely. Questions for Andby? Thanks, Andby. Andabar, Teresa, all the other gals out there do such a great job for us in our public operations. Next up is our City Attorney, Tom Neil.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There've been a number of items that we've been working on for the past three weeks, but I'd like to spend my time today to draw your attention to a draft ordinance that is contained in your packet. Let me preface this by saying that pursuant to the ordinance passed in November authorizing the submission of an amendment to our Home Rule Plan, that amendment, or that ordinance has now become effective, given it has been more than 30 days since its final passage, and probably tomorrow, Monday at the latest, we'll be submitting to the Home Rule Board our application for an amendment to our Home Rule Plan to allow us to, to allow the council to consider adoption of a, an up to 1% municipal sales and use tax. What you have in your packet is a draft ordinance to that effect. This is the, this is the actual enabling, or affecting ordinance that would implement the 1% sales and service tax and use tax, and at the same time and through the same ordinance, reduce the retail BNO tax by the rate that, that had been directed. With respect to the, with respect to the sales tax ordinance, I'd like to point out one, well, two things, really. One is that the, the draft as currently exists implements the entire 1% that is permissible. Second, it deposits those collected taxes. Now understand, before this ordinance can be fully enforced, we need the approval of the State Tax Commissioner. And submission of this draft to the Tax Commissioner for their review and approval will be occurring on a dual track with our submission to the Home Rule Board. That's why the draft was completed now, instead of waiting for the Home Rule Board to make their decision, so that we can keep, keep the train moving down the line and not get, not face a potential six-month delay, if we can at all avoid it. I'd like to point out to you also that, under Section 15 of Article 1 of the draft ordinance, which appears on Page 7 of the draft, the taxes that will be collected are designed present to be deposited into a special revenue fund. The reason why the ordinance is designed that way is that if the revenue is collected into a special revenue fund, it can then be used to finance revenue bonds without going through a public vote process. State code permits that. The ordinance is drafted to comply with state code and give the city maximum flexibility. Now, the, the reason, council, of course, has the option of not, of amending this draft to not provide for a special revenue fund, and just have any sales and use taxes collected go straight into the city's general revenue fund. However, the ordinance is drafted the way it is to give the city flexibility, and let me explain why. Just because the funds go into a special revenue account, it does not mean that they have to stay there in order to pay off revenue bonds. If you look at Section 15, I'm sorry, 15C of the draft ordinance, you'll see that in the event that the city does not opt to issue revenue bonds to be paid off by the municipal sales and use tax, then any unused, any money that is not needed for that can then be diverted, can then be placed into general revenue. So if, this draft gives the city maximum flexibility. So if we would, if the city would want to, if the council would want to issue revenue bonds to do something like a significant stormwater improvement project upfront, financed upfront, and not as a pay-as-you-go over a longer period of time, we could take care of that project, bond it out, pay for it all upfront, and then use the proceeds from the sales and use tax to pay off those bonds. To the extent that that revenue is not necessary to pay off the bonds, either to pay the interest on the bonds or to put into a sinking fund, that the excess in the special revenue fund can be turned back over to general revenue for use in, in whatever the city would want. Once, and then once those general revenue bonds were paid off, all of that money could then be put into general revenue on a quarterly basis, or however the council would, would decide. As revenue were to grow over time in this fund, it could issue multiple bonds to finance multiple projects at once. The special revenue fund can also be used to pay for these projects, these capital improvement projects, on a pay-as-you-go basis. So even if the city were to forego issuing a bond, it could still use the money in the special revenue fund to pay for the same projects, but to, but to go in a pay-as-you-go manner. That is the, that is the way that this draft has been developed. Again, it is only a draft, it is subject to your input, final approval, and your, and your will, but that is, this is a starting point. Granted, any changes that are made must be approved by the State Tax Commissioner, so we don't, I wouldn't recommend making a lot of changes to this draft lightly, because we're liable to be in a position where we're going to have to justify, you know, every, every change that we make, and then we are subject to the, to the will of the Tax Commissioner on whether those are assumed. Finally, Article 2, I'm sorry, Mayor, you have a question?
Yeah, 15C1. I want to be sure everybody understands. We don't have any outstanding general revenue fund bonds right now.
That's correct.
Our utility operations, our enterprise operations do. So it, don't be thinking that, oh my, I thought you were going to realize a new million dollars a year for the general fund. That's still the anticipation. It's not like, oh, now $700,000 of us going to go to pay bonds on, that, we don't have any of those.
No.
But we will have the mechanism, as you've just told us, to more facily, easily...
Quickly.
Exactly. Without having to establish sinking funds and all that other kind of junk, yeah.
Well, the, well, the, we would still have to do sinking funds, but we can use the money, we can use this special revenue fund to, to fund the sinking.
Exactly.
The last thing I want to bring to council's attention is Article 2 of the ordinance provides for the reduction, since we are approaching Home Rule and wish to keep both BNO and, BNO and municipal sales tax, we have to reduce the BNO in, by some measure, some undefined measure. Direct, the direction has been to reduce it by five cents on the retail side for wholesale, and both wholesale and retail, and Article 2 does that, and leaves the rest of the BNO ordinance, ordinance 309, untouched.
Sure. Anything else, Tom? You're going to come back up here and...
Yeah, I have a number of things under strategic issues.
Questions for Tom Neil? We'll call you back here shortly, next time. Correspondence and information, you've got a ton of stuff. There's a PR statement on the vision of Trader's Alley in the Arts District. There is information about the Municipal Home Rule Pilot Program, the 2018 progress report that Andby worked on and submitted. There is the stuff that Rich Clement shared with the building and zoning folks when he did his tutorial session a week or so ago. There's a letter of understanding that I think is an important element. You know, we've talked for so long about the... You know, we've talked for so long about the 100% cooperation that we have enjoyed with all of the adjacent abutting properties up and down Trader's Alley. That's the executed memorandum or letter of understanding with the Newman family heirs. You have the City of Buchanan West Virginia Chine Community Award 2018. It's been added to, oh, here it is, right here. There's our new award. Ambi took all of my old awards away. She said I was looking a little gaudy. You have in your packet the engagement letter from David Howe, our CPA, external auditor. You've got a notice on the fast upcoming January West Virginia Municipal Midwinter Conference Meeting in Charleston. There's information about the Spelling Bee that is sponsored by the Upsher Arts Alliance. It's the fourth annual one, and January 25 is that event. We have one city team. If there's interest, we could put together a second city team. There's a letter that I penned to Senator Manchin on the Atlantic Coast Pipeline Project. There is a city PR statement and my remarks from the lighting of the menorah in Ja'boon Park earlier this week. And finally, a really neat piece that I asked to be put in the packet whereby West Virginia Westland College was ranked as the foremost institution of higher learning in all of West Virginia by all three of Forbes, U.S. News and World Report, and the Wall Street Journal. We're very proud of our college. So informationally. Consent agenda consists of five matters that I'll ask you to approve. The approval of our minutes from our last regular meeting on November 15. The approval of the building and wiring permits. The approval of the payment of our general fund bills. The acceptance of a letter of resignation from Mark Defoe on the Zoning Board of Appeals. So we'll be one shy on the Zoning Board of Appeals. And then we want to be able to participate as we have each year since the Spelling Bee started in the Upsher Arts Alliance's Spelling Bee. What's that cost us? A hundred bucks, Ambi? I think it's 20 bucks or 25 bucks a person. I would entertain a motion that we approve our consent agenda.
So moved.
I have a motion by Mr. Skinner. Mr. Skinner, you're here!
Hey!
I have a second by Pam Capery. Is there discussion on that motion? Hearing of the need for none, I'll call for the question. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign, motion carries. Rigger said that we'd be here till 11 o'clock tonight. I just want to observe that we're already halfway down this page. So, Mr. Rigger, just to let you know that we... Okay, F1, Resolution 2018-20, and we'll take that up together with Resolution 2018-21. What this concerns, Davis Health has two properties impacting projects that we're engaged with, one on Trader's Alley, one in front of the city seal mural. I know, folks have been irate with me for a year and a half. We took out the pretty flowers in front of the city seal mural. Well, we're going to put something up better. The problem was that we didn't own that property in front of the city seal mural, but now we do, or at least we will.
Well, now we do. Now we do. It's just a matter of...
Well, I guess council's got to approve that deed, Bill. They could say, oh, no, send it back. We're not going to do it.
Fair enough.
Hopefully, hopefully, we have a conciliatory budget. Tom, I'm stealing your budget.
It's all right. Quitclaim deeds, quitclaim deeds. So the deeds from Health Facilities Incorporated, which owns each of the tracks that the mayor described, have been delivered. And now you have before you the resolutions of acceptance on each one of them. Resolution 2018-20 has to do with the property, it's approximately 1,260 square feet of property in front of the city seal mural at the corner of North Locust and East Main Street. And Resolution 2018-21 has to do with a 732 square foot, more or less, parcel of property along Trader's Alley on which the city is making certain improvements for beautification purposes. Both of those deeds are quitclaim deeds made in favor of the city. They have each been signed and delivered. If you approve each of these resolutions tonight, I will have them recorded in the county clerk's office tomorrow morning. And I would only ask that I be given the original resolution should they be adopted for recordation with the deeds.
These are not reflective of property swaps. These are dedications. These are, and I don't want to make it sound like it's a total gift because there were some concessions made by the city relative to improvements. We're going to do a nice sidewalk in front of the Davis Health property. We're going to participate in part of the paving of the lot that abuts the sidewalk for Davis Health down in Trader's Alley. But it's worked out really well. Davis Health has been a good partner with us on both of these projects. So let's do this one at a time. Resolution number 2018-20 of the Council of City of Buchanan, Tom's already read it to you. This is the one that has to do with the property in front of the city seal mural. I would entertain a motion that we approve this resolution.
So moved.
I have a motion by Mrs. Albaugh and a second by Pam Capery. Is there discussion on the motion?
Flowers there.
I'm going to call for the question and then I'll poll the council. All those in favor of the resolution and this motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign and now roll call vote. Mayor votes yes. Mr. Rigger?
Yes.
Pam Capery?
Yes.
Mrs. Albaugh?
Yes.
Mr. Skinner?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas is absent. Mr. Ryland?
Yes.
Motion carries. All right. And 2018-21 of the Council of City of Buchanan, this has to do with Trader's Alley property and that's several additional feet that we got from Davis Health to put in the new sidewalk that was earlier reflected within the memorandum of understanding with Davis Health. I would entertain a motion that the council approve Resolution 2018-21.
So moved.
I have a motion by Mr. Rigger. I have a second by Mr. Skinner. Is there discussion on the motion? Hearing of the need for none, I'll call for that question. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign, motion carries. I'm signing the resolution. I'm sending it down to Mr. R...
Do you want to read this one off as well?
Which one is that?
This is 21.
Roll call.
Roll call.
Oh, yeah, we better do that. You want to roll call it?
I can, sure.
Go ahead. How about, make you feel...
Mayor?
I vote yes.
Colin?
Yes.
Pam?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
I vote yes. Dave Thomas is absent. CJ?
Yes.
Okay.
Sure. Thank you. Okay, that takes us down to F3, which is approval of Ordinance 432, expanding the Stockard Youth Centers, Community and Youth Centers Board of Directors. We approved this on the first reading back at the November 15 meeting. So if you pass it tonight, it would become law in 30 days. I would entertain a motion that we approve on the second and final reading, Ordinance 432 of the City of Buchanan, but we got to read it by caption first.
Orderance number 432 of the City of Buchanan and Ordinance 1, expanding the city's Stockard Youth and Community Center Board of Directors by increasing the number of at-large members from four to five and total board membership from 10 to 11. 2, amending the city ordinance numbers 320 and 350. And 3, establishing the effective date of the ordinance.
Tom, wait, one quick, one quick, hang on just a second. Yeah, I'll let you make the motion. We did reflect that one minor change, which, there are five at-large members. In your original draft, you had four. We asked it to go to three, and this draft does in fact reflect three. Is that correct?
Well, let me double-check that. Yes, it does.
It did when I looked at it.
Yep.
Okay, now CJ has made a motion, and I have a second to his motion. I have a second by Mr. Rigger. Is there discussion on that motion? Hearing of the need for none, I'll call for that question. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign, motion carries. The next matter is the request for the appointment of Troy Buddy Brady to the Stockard Youth Center, Youth and Community Centers Board of Directors. If you act on this tonight, he would, he would be appointed effective with the January meeting. And it can't be before January 5 because it takes 30 days for that ordinance that we just approved to go into effect. So we'll have 10 members until January 5, and then at the first meeting, January 7, he'll be the 11th member. I would entertain a motion that we appoint Buddy Brady as our new at-large member. I have a motion by Mrs. Albaugh. May I have a second to her motion? I have a second by Pam Capery. Is there discussion on the motion? No, call for the question. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign, motion carries. The next matter I bring to the council's attention is the request to appoint Erasmo Rizzo, our former sanitary sewer superintendent, as the newest member of our water board. Eric Wagner will be at the water board meeting next week and will remain on the water board until through December 31. Raza's appointment would be effective the very first of the year, January 1 of 2019. I would entertain a motion that we appoint Raza Rizzo as our water board.
Holy...
Wow!
I have a motion by Pam Capery, and I have a second to her motion.
Second.
I have a second by Mr. Rigger.
No, Albaugh.
Albaugh second. Sorry, Mary.
She was quick.
She was quick.
These guys must have a party to go to or something, right?
Yes.
Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing of the need for none, I'll call for the question. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign, motion carries. F6, discussion about city streets maintenance. Mr. Skinner, do you want to tell us?
Do you two want a motion before we start?
Second.
All those in favor of a short presentation, signify by saying aye. Short presentation.
Short presentation. Thank you, Mayor. At Consolidated Public Works Board the other evening, I asked to be put on the agenda, and I delivered a PowerPoint presentation to the board, and it would be for discussion here. Over the past couple of weeks, I've gone around and taken some photos of some areas where we have some significant deferred maintenance issues throughout the community. We've got some streets that are, that have some potholes. We've got a few sidewalks that are in pretty bad shape. We've got some areas where I think we could, we could better develop, in particular, maybe thinking about North Canola Street. If you've been down that street, it's pretty narrow. It's not that it's narrow, it's just it's too narrow for two-way parking, and there could be possibly an opportunity to pull back the sidewalks that are pretty wide to create an opportunity for two sides of the street parking for businesses in that area. But the PowerPoint presentation was about 30 slides with photos, just kind of looking around the community. And kind of the point of it was is just that, you know, want to make sure that we're still on track to work on some of these issues. We've spent a lot of time and effort into Trader's Alley project this summer and fall, and not taking anything away from that, but also making sure that we keep in mind that we have, you know, 160 other streets and we've got parks and we've got, you know, a lot of people that use different facilities. And we want to make sure that we're, if we're following the same mindset, that we want to be inclusive and we want to be, you know, a friendly community to everyone, we want to make sure that our infrastructure is in good shape to be able to handle everyone that would want to use our city for whatever they want to use it for. So that's basically the gist of the presentation. There are some black and white photos in your packet if you want to look at it. I also gave the presentation to Barb. She put it on her computer, so she's got the whole thing. And if you want to see it in full detail, you can come by City Hall and they can show you more detail than what's in the packet that's in black and white. But just throwing some things out there for, just to put things on some folks' radar, that's why I wanted to start with Consolidated and then just bring the council up to snuff, if you will, of what I've done so far.
Thanks. I would observe that most of those sidewalk deficiencies that you observed are in the five-year plan, but we've had funding struggles to be able to... The Trader's Alley project was in the 2015 funding plan, and we couldn't do it because there wasn't money there to do it. So here we are in 2018, just now, three years later, trying to finish that project.
Well, and...
Next July, we'll be in a better situation to catch up.
Right. And as we talked as well, I mean, some, and a lot, in some ways, I mean, the sidewalks are part of the homeowner's responsibility as well, and we can work with the homeowner, but, you know, maybe the, talking about making it a PR opportunity to allow people to be aware that they, that they can request for their sidewalks to be improved.
Yeah. And the way that historically has worked, robbing business, it's about a 50/50 kind of a thing. The labor and materials are about equal. If somebody has a sidewalk project and it would otherwise cost them 1,200 bucks to brand contractor in and replace part of their sidewalk, if they work with the city to do it, we do the labor, they cover the material costs, their cost is half of what it would be if they went out and hired an independent contractor. So, or anybody that wants to get on board with their sidewalks being fixed, which is your obligation to fix, give a shout down to City Hall. CJ asked that F7 be placed on our agenda, which is discussion, we've talked about this intermittently for the last couple of years, about the Buchanan and Upsher County Strategic Planning and Emergency Operations Framework Phase 1. You want to remind us a little bit about this so that we can hopefully not kick the can further down the road, but take some action on something.
So three years ago, we had several meetings about the delivery of emergency services in Upsher County, and we met with Jeff Harvey and developed a framework of a three-phase comprehensive study of the delivery of emergency services in Buchanan and Upsher County. And that was three years ago. So we haven't got started, and I think, I don't think it's on the agenda to assign any funds to this, but I would recommend that maybe in the next meeting or two that we...
Budget sessions are going.
Budget $5,000 in conjunction with the county putting up $5,000 to fund the first phase of this plan, which is based, so the first phase would be studying what currently exists and what is happening with the delivery of emergency services in the city and county. And then that would be reaching out to every entity that's involved in those services. The second part, you know, probably a year and a half from now, would be what are best practices and what has been successful in other communities? And then the third phase would be how do we implement these best practices into our framework as we've identified it? There is a very strong likelihood that these monies can be reimbursed through grants, but we may just have to allocate it and never spend it, but we have to get this thing started. And I thought if we put up our share of the first phase, the county would then reciprocate, and we would have something started because three years and nothing's happened. So I've never finished anything I didn't start. I would strongly recommend we make this investment, not unlike the decisions we made and the fire department and the police department to seek accreditation, which is basically studying what, how you do things and what best practices through Clio or the FIA, I believe, or Fire Department. And you can hear that, you know, the positives coming from both chiefs.
And it's flowing over to...
Jerry's adopting other, you know, things within it. So I think this is, it's not going to be easy. It's going to be multi-year planning, but we have a local expert in Jeff Harvey. And so that's basically the outline and...
Well, the other element of this is, as we are trying to increase our competencies with this collaborative effort, it's the BU community, Buchanan Upsher community, it's going to raise the bar for everybody as far as sharing of information and collaboration throughout all of Upsher County. Everybody's going to be better in our community, not just those residing within the corporate limits. So, yeah, let's, as we get into our budgetary sessions, Ambi, I saw she was jotting notes down back there as we were talking about this, we'll try to make a commitment to allocate those funds while we're also looking for a way to get reimbursed if the grants are available. And I think Jeff Harvey indicated to us that he thought perhaps as much as 50% of that might...
Or more.
Yeah, yeah.
There's Homeland's...
Homeland Security.
Grants and other things that support this. It's, as you know, a lot of times... It's, as you know, a lot of times it's difficult to get them to fund something to start it up, but once you get started and you've shown in the initiative, I think then you can try to seek these reimbursements. And the county commissioner thinks that that's a good viable opportunity, and so I would strongly recommend we make this move.
Mr. Duesberg?
If you'll allow me, just to interject. I attended a meeting that was held at the First President's Period Church several months ago, when we were having all the big deluge flooding, and your Office of Emergency Management had a whole bunch of other folks over there, and y'all have got a really great crew in the county that is not only, you know, the actual services, but also civilian folks who do a lot of volunteering. And I would also commend you, and we have, we supplied y'all with layers of support for your emergency generators for wastewater treatment and freshwater. And as you know, that supplies a lot of the PSDs, so I commend y'all on that foresight on trying to prepare for anything, but you've already got some folks that are, and now it just takes getting them ready together on the same page, and so, but y'all are doing a good job.
Thank you, Sean.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
We're down to F8. Teresa was, she was getting the agendas ready for waste and council meeting last week. She said, "This one should go to waste," right, because it's the Make It Shine thing. I said, "No, we got this grant award, and they've given us a sign that we got to put up someplace, so it doesn't have anything to do with the grant award, it's where we want to put our sign." So, we could have sent it to Consolidated, but I told her, "Just send it to City Council." My thinking is, it's not a huge sign, I think it's three foot by four foot or something like that, is that it ought to be off of the first exit someplace, maybe, you know, close to where the various organization's sign is, somewhere in that neck of the woods. Does anybody have any thoughts as to...
You mean, Main Street exit, or the big one?
The very first Buchanan exit, yeah, the first one.
That sign is gone, isn't it?
All we have out there is the high school soccer championship signs, and then the, I think we have, we might even still have a noise ordinance sign, but then you've got the brick, "Welcome to Buchanan" sign right there at Skyway Motors. That's all we have in that side. On the other side, on the Route 20 side, we have the soccer signs as well. We have an Amy Thomason sign when she was Miss West Virginia in 2003, and we have, I think, a Mason, Freemason sign. But we don't, and then, that's on the right-hand side of the road. On the left-hand side, it breaks, we've got the brick, "Welcome to Buchanan" sign. So, I mean, either place, we would have to probably put up, you know, it would have to be its own separate standing sign, because we don't have a... The organization's sign is out in Tenerton, coming in from that direction.
And this is a state highway, so you better get it permined ready.
That's a state award. I'd like to see the DOH say, "No, you can't put up that state award sign." I think I'd have an interest...
It's a higher tra, the traffic is higher coming off of the Route 20, Buchanan-Phillippe exit versus Main Street, because Main Street, you can only come in from the west, you can't come in from the east.
Are you going to talk to the people at DOH? And if you do, tell them to fix that sign for the West Virginian holiday.
You said, "Gwen," is it something?
They did, they fixed it.
They did fix it, but go ahead, put it out.
Where do you want to put it, gosh? I don't have any strong leadership in this. Dennis wants it in his yard.
Okay.
Really? Well, I suggested, wherever you put the sign, in addition to that, why don't you put that thing on that big moving billboard, too? So rotate, you know? Hey, you could take a picture of it.
Yeah. Ambi just wants me to get rid of all my little...
Now, if you can't find a place to put a physical sign, put it on that billboard.
Make a Make It Shine community. I've done this in...
We have to, as part of this grant award, we have to put the sign up, so.
Let's put it off at 20.
Off at 20.
Let Jerry Arnold figure out a good place and stick it to the ground out there someplace. Does that sound acceptable?
Yep.
I'd entertain a motion that Jerry Arnold exercises best good judgment and discretion out along Route 20 to put our sign up. So, I have a motion by Ryland, can I have a second to his motion? Second. The second by Rigor, is there discussion on the motion? No, I'll call for the question. All those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign motion, carries. F9 is a request to close at noon on Christmas Eve.
Okay, I was at City Hall, and we were having a discussion, the ladies and I, last week, and I was asking them what the protocol was, and they said, "Well, unless council says differently, we have to go by what council says." And sometimes the governor will late in the 11th hour declare, like he did last, this week, that things can be closed for holidays and such. So, I told Teresa, maybe we could put this on the agenda for consideration for council to close at noon on Christmas Eve. So that's how this came about.
I'd like to do one better.
Take the whole day off.
You got Saturday and Sunday. Are we going to bring our employees in for three or four hours and make them work on Christmas Eve?
Well, that was also my thought, but Teresa said that because we have, like, there's a billing cycle or something about utilities, that they felt the need that, at least for a few hours, to be open.
We can get through that, and if Ambi does need something special on Christmas Eve, she's got folks she can turn to. But I think, since we haven't had a cost of living increase for our employees for two years, we stayed open when many local government units around us closed for President Bush's funeral. I'd like to give our employees that full-day holiday and let them have a four-day holiday.
I'll so move.
Second. I have a motion by Mr....
Was that the vote? I think that was the vote.
Everybody motioned, everybody stood.
So, we dial up Dave Thomas to see what he thinks. I think I heard Skinner's motion, and I think I heard Rigor's second.
Rigor, that's up there.
So, we'll just...
They're going to change their minds now, since they don't get to second the motion. Is there discussion on the motion?
It's a Monday.
I'm going to call for the question. All those in favor of the motion of giving our employees all of Christmas Eve off, boy, I feel like Ebenezer Scrooge, "Be back here all earlier the next morning," right? This theatrical stuff's going to my head, I mean to tell you.
It really is.
All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign motion, carries. Resolution 2018-25, supporting the school levy. Hopefully it's in the package.
It is.
Oh, gosh, is it back toward the very back?
Yeah. It's right back behind my pictures.
I think that issue...
I have two. It's right after the DEP award.
Yeah, there it is. If there's any screw-ups to this, I drafted this resolution and sent it to Tom O'Neill to look at. He said, "Yeah, it's fine."
I denied it. I missed it.
Yeah.
Attorney is puppet to mayor.
It's a short resolution. Let me read it real quickly. This is Resolution Number 2018-25 of the Council of City of Buchanan. Whereas on Saturday, January 19, 2019, the Upsher County Board of Education will sponsor a countywide school levy election throughout Upsher County, West Virginia. Whereas our Upsher County community has steadfastly supported and passed all school levies since 1998, and whereas the currently proposed school levy will not result in any increase in taxation to affected property owners, that is, the school levy rate will remain the same as the past several previously enacted school levies. And whereas the currently proposed school levy will comprise approximately 10% of the Upsher County school system budget for the next several years, with our school system realizing approximately $3 million annually from our school levy. And whereas, among other things, the proposed school levy will dedicate revenue toward the prevention resource officers, instructional programs, supplies, materials, equipment, technology access and improvement, capital improvements and preventive maintenance, substitute employees, extracurricular activities, and extended employment agreements, contracted services and student-related community services, and safety enhancements and improvements, all while servicing all of the schools throughout Upsher County. And whereas the citizens of Buchanan have historically strongly supported public education and hence school levies, and whereas the Council of the City of Buchanan believes it is important and compelling to remind all citizens of our Buchanan-Upsher community to value, support, and appreciate public education, and urges all of our voting citizens to vote for the 2019 school levy on Saturday, January 19, 2019, further reminding all citizens that communities that value education through school levy support are generally reviewed by the external business world as being the most financially viable and progressive communities meriting consideration for economic development, now therefore be resolved by the Council of the City of Buchanan as follows. I would entertain Mr. Skinner's motion...
Yes.
...that we approve this, and I would entertain a second by Mrs. Alba. Is there discussion on the motion relative to this resolution? Hearing of the need for none, I'm going to call for the question. All those in favor of this resolution, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign, and again, the roll call vote. The mayor votes yes. Mr. Rigor?
Yes.
Pam Capery?
Yes.
Mary Alba?
Yes.
Mr. Skinner?
Yes.
Clifford J. Ryland?
Yes.
Jay David Thomas is actually the resolution carries. Takes us down to F12, our last strategic matter. Tom O'Neill has requested that instead of being an independent contractor, that we bring him semi into the fold as a quasi-employee and be placed on the payroll instead of as a contractor. Ambi has run the numbers, and in a nutshell, if we honor Tom's request, which I encourage us to honor, it's going to cost us about $5,000 bucks and change a year to do this, because there'll be some withholdings and things like that. We're not putting him on the payroll relative to state retirement. We're not putting him on the payroll relative to healthcare, anything like that, but there is workers' comp and Social Security and stuff like that that would come out each time. Have I, Tom, have I captured your request, and Ambi, have I captured your information correctly?
Yes, divided four ways.
Divided four ways. So, general fund, which includes Consolidated, and then sanitary water and waste would absorb... So, the impact to the general fund is 1/4 of this $5,000 and change amount, about $1,300, $1,400 a year. I would encourage us to do this. I would entertain a motion to that effect. I have a motion by Mrs. Alba, and I have a second to her motion.
Second.
I have a second by Mr. Ryland. Is there discussion on the motion? No, call for the question. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign, motion carries. Takes us down to council comments and announcements. Mary Alba?
I don't have anything to second, so...
You're all talked up, Mary?
Yeah.
You want to sing your favorite Christmas carol?
No.
No.
Pam Capery?
Just want to say that with Christmas coming up, if anybody wants to, has any money, they'd like to donate to the building fund at Stockard Youth Center. That's what we really like to see happen this year, so it'd be a great gift for the community and for the kids.
You're stealing my thunder, my closing comments, but I'm glad you did. Anything else, Pam?
Nope.
Mr. Ryland?
I'm good.
Mr. Skinner?
I just spent a couple of days at the West Virginia Chamber of Commerce with their winter board meeting. We, there was a lot of information shared about West Virginia's economic condition, as well as West Virginia's economic outlook. Four years ago, there were 14 counties that were actually growing in West Virginia. That number now is nine. Upsher is one of the nine counties that is seeing population growth, which is obviously positive for us. Nobody around us has seen that. We're the only county in, that is not a border county, that is growing. We're the only one. Everybody else is either Montangalia, the eastern Panhandle, and Putnam, but Putnam is, they don't really count, this is Charleston and Huntington, people moving to Putnam County. But, so we are, we are the only county in the gut of West Virginia that is growing. So, you know, I think, you know, and folks were recognizing that in, you know, in these meetings, saying Upsher County must be doing a lot of things right. Michelle Christian, some of you may remember, she was in Buchanan with other members of the SBA a couple of weeks ago, touring businesses here that have been successful using the Small Business Development Center in conjunction with the Upsher County Development Authority and the chamber here. She was a keynote speaker at this event, and she highlighted her experience in Buchanan as her favorite place to come to in West Virginia. And she toured about 18 counties, 18 places. She said that Buchanan should absolutely be a model community for small-town, small-business success. So, I have her contact information, and she's, she was very, 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 very pleased with her visit here. So, we're very well-known around the state and region for being a place that does a lot of things right. So, I, you know, not, that is all part of our community as a whole. There's a lot of good people here that do a lot of great things for Buchanan-Upsher. So, that's, I just want to share that, that's where I've been, so I apologize for being late, but thank you.
Ambi said she's going to have to pay for the meeting.
That's okay.
Thanks, Rob, I appreciate the good work.
Give me 20 bucks.
Mr. Colin Rigor?
No comments, huh? Boy, that takes me down to mind, just a couple of observations, and then I have a short statement.
I second that, CJ.
Like six, size six font.
We recognized Buddy Brady earlier today. Buddy, as you know, is retiring from public service, sort of, except we put him back on the Stockard Youth Center board. It's something that's been very near and dear to his heart. Commissioners Terry Cutright and Sam Nody made a $500 gift to the Stockard Capital Campaign in his honor. I would also tell the council that I'm not, I've been asked to wait until the December 20th meeting. We will receive a $12,000 gift toward the Stockard Capital Campaign, which will be the second-largest ever given. I am also pledging my third $1,000 installment, which will take us just about the $250,000. We had, we had talked seriously about, the building kit is going to cost us about $250,000. Jerry Arnold is working with Jay Holland on the specs and the final plan submittal, and they would like to be in a position to bid the kit project out, that again, we think is going to be about $250,000 in about March, with a probable groundbreaking as early as May or June. So I want you to have that on your radar screen, something that we've all been committed to for some time. These little bumper stickers that cost us like 20 cents a pop, we're selling for $2 a piece at City Hall, so anybody that wants to get in and have a neat little thing on their car window, come down to City Hall, and Teresa or Barb or any of the gals outside will fix you up. But let's get that thing built. My closing statement. The holidays, again, are nearly upon us. We're already in day four of Hanukkah, having illuminated our menorah in Jabon Park just this past Monday evening, kicking off the Jewish Festival of Lights. Special thanks to Daya Wright and our already hard-working diversity appreciation coalition. Christmas Eve has been 18 nights away, and our BU kids, all of whom have been very good this year, await Santa, and New Year's Eve and Day, and hence 2019, will be here before you know it. It seems like I just finished reminding everyone about Fall Fest events, our spooky Halloween fun-filled stuff, and giving thanks at Thanksgiving, and now here we are near the end of 2018. I hope that we might all think of these holiday festivities as our season of giving to those who needs are greatest. In our community, we have several opportunities to assist those in need. Our local Salvation Army, the Parish House, and the Upsher County Christmas store, and even reaching out to our local schools are all excellent ways to make things madder for many. Our Stockard Youth and Community Center could really use your funding help, as could our Colonial Theater. You may sign up at City Hall to contribute a monthly amount to either one of those building improvement programs, or to help fund our dog park or flower program. I do $5 a month to each of the four city programs. Visits to those residing at St. Joseph's Hospital and area nursing homes will lift many folks' spirits during the holidays. If you are concerned about the percentage of your cash gifts that actually go to the causes supported by charities, you may want to consider checking out charitywatch.com. Al Tucker tells us that the Band of Brothers is still selling calendars to help our southern West Virginia neighbors who are struggling mightily. This beautiful calendar costs $15. Tomorrow evening, beginning at 5:30, we will officially kick off our holiday season in Buchanan.
officially kick off our holiday season in Buchanan with the lighting of our Christmas tree in Jawbone Park, followed by lineup of our annual Christmas parade sponsored by our own Buchanan Fire Department. The parade starts at 6:30, and kids of all ages are invited after the parade to then visit Santa at the fire department's side of our public safety complex. I get to be in the parade this year depicting Bad Santa. Our city streets and parks guys have performed a stellar job in decorating our downtown. The banners have been hung on Main Street and lights adorn our period lighting poles from the courthouse all the way to College Avenue. Next year, and we need to be thinking about a budget for this, we'll be looking to add banners and lights to the gateway west side of Main Street. Our hay wagon rides will continue for the next three Saturdays from 5 to 9, climb aboard in Jawbone Park. Saturday is Whoville on North Canola Street, and some ladies I know are dressing up yours truly to be the kind of creepy mayor of Whoville. Pam Perry says she can't work wonders with my marginal hairline. Sunday, yeah. Sunday is the Festival of Lessons and Carols at Wesleyan College. December 13 through 16 is Miracle on 34th Street at CJ's Opera House, courtesy of Buchanan Community Theater. I was solicited to play Bad Santa, so come witness my theatrical debut. Please come out and be part of our community's fun. Buchanan is a happening place, so don't find yourself left on the sidelines to get involved with us. There's something here for everyone, so make merry with us. Remember, we're all in this together. Thanks for attending our meeting. We'll see you back on December 20. I would entertain a motion, we adjourned. Motion by Ryland, second by Albaugh. Discussion on the motion? No, call for the question. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. We adjourned.